Selecting members president, our selectman Griffin, selectman Miller, selectman Gilman, department heads, that are present are town administrator Brenda Pearl, fire chief Tom Blanchett, road agent Russ Pearl, and Dana, Chief Dana Flanders has taken a, takes some time off, so he will not be here. However, he submitted a, gave us a letter to read in his, his absence. We will start off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Jump right down to consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for consent agenda.
Make a motion that we accept and approve the consent agenda as listed.
I will second that.
Motion made by selectman Miller, seconded by selectman Griffin. Any discussion?
No.
No.
No discussion. Take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Appointment, Andrew Hatch, representing Community Power Coalition. Sir, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
Good.
Good evening, selectmen. Yes, as I said, my name is Andrew Hatch. I'm the engagement manager for CPCNH, Community Power Coalition. And tonight, I'm joined by my colleague Jackson Caspari. Jackson is the director of member services.
Yes, Mr. Jackson.
And we have provided a little handout, which we have a copy, I think is going to get shown up on the screen, in addition, just to sort of walk through. The reason for being here tonight is that Administrator Pearl contacted me and said that Chairman Gilman had requested us to come to talk about the current status with rates. So what we prepared is just a brief slide deck, which will run through the status of Loudon Community Power today. But we would very much welcome either questions during or after this brief presentation.
Perfect. Thank you.
So just to kick off, Loudon Community Power launched just over a year ago in June 2024. And I know at least a couple of the selectmen were involved in the process of the approvals through the Public Utilities Commission and the aggregation plan that you adopted. We continue to monitor activity in all our member communities. Quite a lot has happened since June 2024. And we now have over 60 active communities offering community power around the state. And we maintain a monthly account of what each of those communities is doing in terms of participation. And that's what this first slide just summarizes, that as of the first of July, there are 1,744 active accounts in the town of Loudon participating in community power. A vast majority of those are with Eversource and a handful with Unitil. And your participation at 58% represents the, the number of folks who are registered accounts with the two utilities, or the three, in fact. There's just, I think, a handful of New Hampshire Electric Co-op customers as well in town. So out of that total, 58% remain engaged with the coalition. Over time, you have had activity, both in terms of people opting in and opting out of the program. And that is one of the cornerstones of community power, that we do our best to try and make it as easy as possible, at no cost, for folks to move in and out of the program at will. The percentage of folks who are not participating, the largest figure is that 20.6% who are with third-party suppliers, other suppliers than the utility default. And then 4.1% of your population of accounts are net metered. And you may recall that due to regulatory issues, we can't automatically serve folks who have solar or other forms of net metering, largely because we need to have a one-on-one conversation with them to determine whether it's in their interest to participate in the program, or stay with the utility default to get the necessary credits. So that's basically just teeing up where things are at today in Loudon. Next slide, please. What I've done, just to give the select board a little bit of a flavor of what we operate and maintain on behalf of the town of Loudon, is some screenshots from the Loudon community page that we maintain at communitypowernh.gov. This is the primary source of updated information that residents of all our member communities can access. And as you can see on this slide, this is the very top of the screen. This is what presents when somebody first goes on to the Loudon page. And you'll see a couple of things that we've done relatively recently to make access to information much simpler and easy to, to see as soon as you get online. So you can see there's a, a little box there that says sign up for rate announcement emails, and then below that, an 800 number for customer service. And next slide, please. And if you're drilling down, then you will be able to see that you can go straight to the contact center, find out how to get in touch via email, 800 number, or to self-serve through what we call our portal, which is what's on the left-hand side there. And below that portal are the rates that are currently in place, and the ones that are upcoming, and those of the utilities. My colleague is going to explain a little bit about how we have taken some steps to introduce a slightly different rate product in this next upcoming rate period. And we'll get into that in a minute. But just to show you all of the ways that are presented on the website. Next slide, please. And finally, I did speak with George Saunders over the weekend. George, I think, was planning to be here tonight, but unfortunately had a funeral to attend. And George brought in the new representative, Jerry Bogerman, to our offices a few weeks ago. And we have the opportunity to meet him and bring him up to speed with the role of member representatives for the town of Loudon. So I'll obviously be keeping in touch with George closely on what's going on. George and Jerry, along with Administrator Pearl, will have been receiving regular communications about our rates. We've just gone through the rate-setting period that becomes effective August 1. And so we're right now in the last month of the six-month period expiring on July 31. So what you have in front of you now are the current rates that are in force through the coalition and the varying utilities. And you'll see here that we are set at 9.7 cents. We started this rate period at 8.9, and were, due to market forces, forced to up our rates marginally to 9.7 in March. And those have sustained through the end of, end of this rate period. What this rate card shows you is the average cost for a consumer using 650 kilowatt-hours a month. It's a sort of benchmark that's used. Some utilities, Eversource, have recently been using 600. But it's in the kind of ballpark that gives you an idea. And this is just the supply side of the bill, don't forget. This is not anything to do with delivery. And so a participating customer of Loudon Community Power will see supply and then a rate that will be showing at 9.7 right now. And that would typically be costing them $63 a month. So you'll see there is a small premium at the moment over the prevailing rates of Eversource and Unitil. You'll see at the bottom there, though, that over time, since the launch a year ago, an average household in Loudon, as an Eversource customer, would have saved $47 over time. That includes the, the slight premium that's been ongoing in this last six months. So they're still in pocket right now. This rate period was the first rate period where the utilities started to set rates in a different manner. And it is important to understand this, because the way that the coalition has been procuring power, and the way that the utilities procure power, has been undergoing some changes that have been implemented due to the Public Utilities Commission's ordering of the utilities to, to do something different. The genesis of that was back in the December 2022, when rate setting in that December coincided with the invasion of Ukraine and the resultant spike in the cost of natural gas. And rates from Eversource went up north of 20 cents. It was around that time that the coalition was getting in, to a launch of its first communities. And so some of our earlier adopters benefited heavily from that period. But Jackson will talk a little bit more about the, what's been going on. But that was when those rates seemed to be out of whack from the average. And the Public Utilities Commission started to look into ways to moderate rates. So next slide just talks about the differences in supply procurement. So on the left-hand side, the utilities have now been ordered to take more and more of their power on the, what we call the day-ahead market, meaning that they're not buying power for six months on a contract that has what we describe as a risk premium, meaning that it's a good number, somebody else is taking the risk that if rates don't cover costs, there won't be any repercussions for customers. And this market exposure has been ratcheted up this rate period that's just been set for August, where all the utilities will be procuring at least 50% of their power on the, on the day-ahead marketplace. When we came in, we checked the power, the cost of power tonight is way north of $100 a megawatt hour, because it's been a hot day and everybody's got home and cranking the AC and things like that. That's what market volatility is all about. We also are in the same marketplace, and along with the utilities, suffered some very extreme weather conditions this winter. And this winter, all the utilities were definitely suffering from their costs being higher than their revenues, and having to make some form of reconciliation down the line. CPCNH does not procure power in exactly the same way and doesn't put as much market exposure to the marketplace. We hedge our transactions. That does tend to put our rates on the higher side, because there is this cost that we're engaging with upfront, to avoid repercussions of under-collection down the line. And so that's something that I just wanted to tee up. And I'm going to ask Jackson just to speak a little bit more about that. You'll see the little asterisks at the bottom. It says artificially low rates resulting in market distortion and lower NEM, that's net metering reimbursement, meaning that, as we just said, the rates for Eversource and the other utilities are in the 8 cents range and have been for the last six months. And those rates are not covering costs. And there will be a time when that has to be reconciled. But it's not going to be universally adopted in this current rate period. And with that, I'll just hand over to Jackson, so you can have another voice.
Yeah. Thank you, Andrew. And thank you all for the invitation to come and speak to you this evening. We always appreciate an opportunity to speak with a governing body and have a chance to answer questions that you may have. I, before I get into this next slide, I just wanted to sort of reiterate a point that Andrew made earlier. We track opt actions or customer movements on a weekly basis. And we've seen in Loudon that your customers, your constituents, they do really pay attention. And we think this is an excellent thing, because the customers, you know, through Community Power have added choices, and they're able to act on those choices on a monthly basis. So really leaning into that customer choice component, and that definitely holds true in Loudon. If you could go to the next slide, please. So one of the other benefits that we'll reiterate at the end of Community Power is, you know, we're able to collectively advocate at the regulatory stage and legislatively on behalf of our member towns, and on behalf of the customers within those member towns. And when it comes to a recent ruling of the PUC, we really saw the power of that take effect. There was a lot of concerns that these under-collections that Andrew was speaking of could have been shifted into the delivery side of the bill, which would be a very anti-competitive practice, right? Essentially, they set rates that are too low, they don't collect enough revenue, and then they're able to shift those costs or hide them in the delivery side of the bill, which then all customers would have ended up paying for. So that was a major concern for the competitive market, CPCNH, other types of competitive suppliers as well. And fortunately, through, you know, collective action and intervention at the PUC level by the coalition, we were able to get a favorable ruling from the PUC that at least said that, you know what, we're, we're going to have the utilities recover these through the supply side of the bill, which is how it should be done. But of course, there are still concerns over, you know, allowing for under-collections to be pushed further and further out into the future, and not reconciled during, like, the next set of rates, is, which is what we think would be the, really the most fair approach here. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So I do want to go through, you know, the upcoming utility supply rates. As you can see on this chart here, there's values listed for Eversource, Unitil, Liberty, and NHEC. Obviously, the, the major factor for this community would be, you know, Eversource and Unitil rates. And, you know, the bulk of those hovering in the 11 to 12 cent range. You will note that the rate that was initially filed by Liberty Utilities is in the 14.8 cent approximately range. And, you know, the PUC has recently ordered Liberty to refile its rates, which will likely drop that effective cost, because they have said, you know, you have under-collected, but we want you to take 50% of that under-collection out and push it off into the future. The point I'm making with this is that the 14.811 really shows what utility rates might look like if, you know, the full under-collections were showing up in this current rate period. And so we are sort of looking out into the future and expecting that, you know, it's likely that these under-collections are going to impact future rates. And, you know, we are going to be working very hard on ensuring whatever happens, you know, legislatively this season and through our own rate-setting process, make sure that, you know, we are in a sort of fair overall competition marketplace, and that, you know, the decisions that are being made at the PUC level are the correct decisions for customers in New Hampshire. If you go to the next slide, please. So just to talk a little bit more about how the coalition sets rates on behalf of the participating programs, right, we have a set of policies that really govern this practice, energy portfolio risk management policy, retail rates policy, as well as a financial reserves policy. And, you know, we take into account factors such as, you know, fairly sophisticated load forecasting, which has improved over the course of time as the organization matures, and we have more historical data on our customer base. And those customer accounts sort of have leveled out since launching so many programs. We have better quality of data in terms of forecasting. We also have a very sophisticated financial model that we rely on, that has improved as well. And we use, you know, what we call probabilistic forecasts. So we look at a range of probabilities and use that to make very informed decisions at a board level. And we have also moved to cost-of-service based rates, which I'm going to talk to momentarily. And this all comes from, again, that data collection over time that has shown us that the cost to serve different customer classes does vary, as well as cost to serve customers within different utilities. And we're an organization, on behalf of our members, really wants to make sure that there's cost causation in all rates that are, are being set. So rates cover costs, and they cover costs appropriately for that group of customers. So I'm going to speak to that in a minute, but that just sort of tees up that next point. And then, of course, you know, there's a, there's a public deliberative process that happens, starts with an RMC, Risk Management Committee, and our Finance Committee. And then a recommendation is given to the Board of Directors, who, you know, represents the participating communities and, and acts on approving those rates. The next slide, please. So, you know, why move to cost-of-service rates? Again, this is a change for this come, upcoming rate-setting period, the six months that will be in effect starting August 1. And it's really due to us realizing that, you know, the capacity costs that are being assigned by ISO New England, which is our regional grid operator, are varying by different customers within different utility territories. And that is a, a major cost factor in our rate buildup. And to be more equitable about that, we are basically assigning that in our rate buildup for customers within those utilities, and then looking at some of that class-level data as well. So it's a way to really get, you know, fair treatment of customers. We're trying to avoid any potential sort of cost shift that could occur on our end, in terms of just having maybe a, a flat rate out into the future. And this seems to be a, a more sophisticated approach. So, you know, this also gets, making sure that there's an equitable reserve contribution on behalf of the member CPAs as well. Of course, that's something that, you know, we'll be tracking going forward. And then I'll turn it back over to Andrew, take it from there.
Thank you, Jackson. And we are trying to be thorough, but not take a deep dive into the weeds. So hopefully, we got through that bit okay for you. Please feel free to fire any questions. But what we've got up on the screen now are our rates that are for the Eversource customers, both on the residential category and general service and outdoor lighting. And then the, the blue line is the granite basic. That is the default for Loudon. So the Loudon customers, starting the first of August, if they were a, a small business or outdoor lighting customer, would be paying 12.87 cents. And if they're residential customer, 13.419. The green are the opt-up options of a higher level of renewable energy. 25.2% is the state-mandated renewable content required for all electricity in the state, and that's what we match. So that blue line is an apples-for-apples comparison with the, the electricity that is contracted by the utilities themselves. There are more rates that are set for other sizes of customers, and there are similar rates for Unitil. So going back to what I said about the, the website, there is easy, accessible information that is specific to a particular customer and their particular utility. So they can access that easily online. But it has obviously become somewhat less easy for us just to send out rate sheets and rate cards. We are growing and have grown up to, as I said, over 60 operating CPAs, as we call them, Community Power Aggregations, and close to 200,000 customers now. And our experience in that has really sort of brought to bear what Jackson was talking about in terms of being able to have a very good handle on the, the true costs. What we're, what we're trying to do with reserves is to build our reserves up to a critical point, when we are at a place where we can now start to procure power at an even more advantageous rate for our customers. That's something that's very important to the coalition for its long-term viability. We need to make sure that we have necessary reserves to maintain our balance sheet and grow the coalition, but with the intent, over time, and we've set an horizon of three years, to be able to become what's called a load-serving entity, which means that we can go buy power and cut out middle parties who do take a profit from our procurement practices. And the last slide, please. So what, what I would just leave you with some thoughts are, there's a lot more to community power, as we discussed as we were going through the process of bringing the electric aggregation plan to the public and talking to folks about that. You may recall back when we launched, everybody in the town of Loudon, irrespective of whether they were on default power with a third party, all received a letter explaining all of this. Nothing has fundamentally changed, but what we have done is get better in terms of our accessibility and communications. And we've also introduced several programs that we were only talking about theoretically a year ago. So we still remain local control, member-driven organization. Customer choice, as we've just talked about, making sure that folks have currently a choice of different renewable levels, but in the future, maybe even more optionality. And then, underpinning all of this, the ability for folks to move in and out of the program as they see fit. The competition is bringing rates down, and there's no doubt about that. The market innovation is something that we're working hard. We've got projects and programs committees talking about a lot of things. In, in Concord, they're about to start a pilot study, which is part of a, a plan to improve choice and access to having more control over your electric use. And that's a program we're helping them pilot. We've just launched a program, it's actually called Poverty Plains. It's in Warner. It's going to be a large solar development, and we're, we've been offering up the opportunity to participate in that. And finally, public advocacy, which is all about what Jackson just spoke about, about intervening at the PUC, at the legislative level, and making sure that we speak on behalf of the rate payers in, in the state, and keep their voice heard as, as public policy progresses. And with that, very much open to further questions.
Well, I can kick it off first and just say the reason why you were invited here is, we asked you to come here was because way back when, there was a, we've had several meetings with your company, and to move forward, we put out some public, public meetings for the public and to educate them of what's, what's going to be available if it passed through the town. It was, went in front of the townspeople, the town voted for it, and in moving forward, we're seeing, at least I'm seeing, an increase in what we thought was going to be a rate back then. And I understand things fluctuate and go their way. So the reason, I guess the reason why you're here is that the townspeople voted to either accept this program or not, and opt in or opt out. However, the burden still comes back to this board to maintain, to make sure that our people are being treated what was promised to them, number one. And number two is what's down the road. And this is the reason why you're here. Obviously, we have YouTube going, so pretty much the community is listening to you as we speak. Now, don't underestimate the crowd here today. But you're on YouTube, and, and most of the town is probably watching this and trying to figure what's going on. So, and, and so I follow up with this question. If you've, my understanding was, the more communities that would come on to this program, it would reduce money, correct? Or it would recruit, it would reduce some of the fees paying for electricity. And we've had, you've just, when you opened, you added 62 communities to this program. But yet, we're not going in that direction. We're moving, we're going up instead of down. So where would we be without those 62 communities?
Yeah, it's, you know, that's hard to put a number to that. You're correct in that as the scale grows, there is a pool purchasing power element to this. As we get a larger customer base, it allows for the coalition to, you know, be more attractive when we're getting sort of bids on portions of our power portfolio. And it also allows for the reduction of sort of individual, let's call it customer service costs per customer. So that element is totally true. The reason we're seeing rate hikes across the board is a result of movement in the marketplace. Natural gas is the main driving factor in cost when it comes to electricity prices in New England. That's because between 40 to 50% of generation comes from natural gas-fired plants in New England. And, you know, Andrew mentioned the war in Ukraine. That initially caused the big price spike, because Europe all of a sudden had a very high demand for US natural gas, which increased our amount of exports to Europe. We weren't maintaining a lot of that domestically. Therefore, that drove the price up domestically in a significant way. Well, then Europe kind of took a, a changed approach on that, after things had progressed a bit there. And all of a sudden, there was a excess of natural gas available in reserves. And so that really drove the price back down, and now it's kind of leveling out. And the rates range we're seeing now, I guess, is what I would consider more in the normal range. It went from like an extreme high to a, pretty much an extreme low, and now it's sort of evened out in the middle. In terms of rate competition, you know, we've had very competitive rates in the past. We try to continue to offer very competitive rates. They have to cover our costs, obviously. And what we're really concerned about is, with this 50% market exposure we're talking about, right, all the utility rates are proxy rates. They don't know what their actual costs are. They're, they're picking a number. They're avoiding some risk premium by having half of their, you know, expected load floating in the real-time market. But we're seeing major in the real-time market, but we're seeing major spikes in temperature. You know, we had very hot days in June. It's been hot and humid. We can expect this, but that drives the real-time price through the roof. And so we'll be tracking sort of how that gets reconciled in terms of rate increases on the utility side of things. But it is to say that, you know, this was a major change since community power really came on the scene.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Well, it also sounds like there wasn't a whole lot of information at the time when we first got involved in the market. Is that correct?
About this move to...
Well, the risks and all those other, you've gained more information now than you had when we actually talked, I think, about joining.
Yeah.
Obviously, a new business is going to take time to get that information so that you can share the data and make a better decision on where you would go. And it sounds like, from what I heard, that, you know, the other companies are going low and then hoping to charge it off by giving it to community powers, which would artificially spike it as well. And I think the assistance at the PUC was great and that the PUC actually saw what they saw.
Yes.
And made it determine that it's got to be a little more fair.
Correct.
Because you came in and you threw a low ball, you can't charge somebody else on the other side, is what I hear.
No, that's exactly right.
So now, I guess it's fair to say that we had low, now we're going a little bit higher, and, well, what's the next rate, do you think?
Yeah.
The world's market, I mean, we're probably going to stay about even on the gas, the natural gas prices aren't probably going to fluctuate to that degree, even though we've got a big to-do overseas.
I agree. When we look at, you know, our, call it forwards, and unfortunately, we have to caveat this stuff because things can happen, as we all know. But when we look out into the future, we do sort of see this as potentially a high point over the next, you know, couple of years when we look at, you know, projecting sort of costs and potential rates. You know, we can't guarantee that, but we're very hopeful that prices will come down on behalf of customers. And of course, you know, in terms of our advocacy, we're very much aligned with the consumer advocate. You know, we see ourselves as another helpful party to the consumer advocate to make sure that, you know, customers have options, they are being sort of treated fairly by monopoly utility supply practices, and so on. So slight side tangent to what you're asking, but yeah.
No, and it makes sense as well. I mean, we're pretty new into it, so if you weren't there for the PUC hearings and having input for the customer, where would the customer be at that point?
Exactly.
Probably be a whole lot higher.
So you, do you see a point when this is going to turn around? I mean, obviously, you know, at the beginning, it seemed like you guys were under the current utilities. Now you're a little above. I mean, I'm not knocking the company or anything, but there's been a lot of headlines about the company in particular with maybe a budget windfall and that kind of things and improper forecasting before. Now, as you get more on track, do you see a time where you might end up coming back to or below?
Yeah, I mean, we're very hopeful.
Is that a year, two years, five years?
I mean, it's a good question, and it's hard to say. I'll just say that we obviously understand that having very competitive rates in comparison with utilities is very important for our customer base, and it's a major focus of ours. And we will be adjusting our strategy, both on the legislative side and in terms of our actual procurement practices, our work with our risk management committee, to try to make sure we can really compete the best way possible. And, you know, we're hopeful that if some of these reconciliations come up, like we think they should, this next period around, our rates will look, you know, more competitive than they do in this current period, and that would be starting this winter.
Yes, just to be clear, so rate setting is June and December. So our next window in terms of the mapping to the utility rate period is December. We choose to map to those to make it more apples and apples, easier for folks to understand. You can operate community power in another way, which is through a broker. There's 10 communities that launched in the time we've been operating through broker models. They haven't been successful in beating the rates of the utilities. It's further, I think, backing up some of our position here that these rates are somewhat artificial because those brokers purchase power for 24 or 30 months on behalf of their communities, and they were looking at those forecasts, and they were pinning a rate that they thought would be competitive. It hasn't yet played out that way, and I think it further reinforces this artificiality that we're currently enduring with the way that the utilities are setting the rates. And that's got to come home to roost at some point, and we are looking to December to turn this around. We do not launch communities who are, when we are more expensive than their utility. That's just part of the way that we do business. We want people to be saving money and seeing the benefits of this. So it is very important for the Coalition to track this and get it right, and hopefully, the legislative and public utilities support will make sure that the playing field is level by the time we come around to set rates again in December.
Well, I want to thank you for the, I know we reached out and asked you to come in, and my understanding was, the comment was, absolutely, we'll be there your next meeting. And I appreciate that, and this town appreciates that because transparency is pretty important in this town, and saving money is even more important.
Yeah.
We do appreciate you just coming right in, coming in with what you displayed, and I want to thank you personally. So, and I'm sure some of the community wants to do the same, so thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move to Board of Permits. I'll open the Board of Permits at 6:37. Yeah, Representative, we'll have Representative from Zoning, which will be Earl Tucson, and then Representative from Planning will be...
Rodney Phillips.
Let's look, just watch him.
Hot Rod.
Rodney Phillips. All right, we'll start off with the first one, which will be the Old Home Day, 8/8/25, which is a Friday, car show, vendors, 8/10/10/25, Sunday church service. So in between those dates, listed as a fair-type event, annual event. Questions, concerns, comments? Held at 45 Recreational Drive.
Annual event. Appears they submitted all the paperwork, Chief.
Yes.
None.
Zoning, any concerns?
No comments or questions.
Russ, you're good?
Yep.
Mark, good?
I am good.
Jeff, good?
I am.
Brenda, good?
They, we usually waive the fee. We make a motion that we waive the fee for the Old Home Day Committee.
What is the fee? Is it $150? It's not checked.
Is that $150, Chief?
What's the fee for this event?
Well, they didn't indicate, but I would say that it's probably $350 bucks over the course of the day.
Yeah. So 300, I would make a motion that we waive the $350 fee for the Old Home Day.
I will second that.
Motion made by Selectman Miller to waive the $350 fee for the Old Home Day Committee, seconded by Selectman Griffin. Any discussion? Other than that, we waive the fee every year, right?
Yeah.
Good. All right, take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fee is waived. Application good to go. Second application, Town Roads Outline and Attach Supplemental Information, Town of Loudon, Ragnar Events LLC. Looks like it's between 1,000 and 2,000 people, fee for $250. Passed through 200-mile running relay with stopping point at Church of the Nazarene. Annual event, Chief?
Yeah, this is year five, I believe, that they've been coming through town. The police department usually staffs with a detail of the major intersections. Chief Flanders usually has four officers, I believe, in play. We put an officer in charge and one ambulance in play for the event. I will note that this is the weekend that the racetrack opens up for camping, so this event typically clears Loudon between 7:30 and 8:00 a.m. So luckily, that early in the morning, the traffic is pretty minimal on 106. It shouldn't be in effect on it.
Date, September 13th, 2025. Any issues, comments, concerns?
Have they already paid, Chief?
I do not believe they have a, they weren't invoiced. And I know that Tammy has been in communication with them, so historically, they've had their invoices, haven't had any issues.
Involved Road, you good, Russ? Brenda, you good?
Good.
They basically come down Shaker Road, Old Shaker Road, to Puff Pond, and they go through the Class 6 portion of Les Maurice.
Yeah.
Out through the North Village, down through South Village, Will's Bridge, 106, to Staniels Road.
Zoning, any concerns?
I do, actually. If you look at leg 23, the fourth step down there, it says, "Crossed over road with police assistance to continue against traffic." So they're explicitly calling out police assistance to get across Route 4, but if you look over here at leg 22, where it says, "Turn left to run into traffic on Staniels Road," they're not explicitly calling out that police assistance. If, you know, I think we've done that with them in the past, but if somebody there at Ragnar thinks that they don't need that, maybe they just need to be made aware that that needs to be part of that plan as well.
We don't typically cross them at Staniels. They usually cross at Will's Bridge with an officer, and then they...
If that's where it is, wherever it is, you know, they're explicitly calling it out on this leg, they're not explicitly calling it out on that one.
Right.
Perhaps that should be brought to their attention.
Yep, we can do that. We typically, at our recommendation, cross them at Will's Bridge because it's much narrower intersection, more easily controlled than the Staniels. The first year, we did try Staniels.
It did work. Regardless where, they cross on 6.
Yeah.
That's what this suggests, they make the situation.
Right. That was a good point.
Good catch. Chief, you'll take care of that?
Yeah, I'll talk with Chief Flanders about it. We'll note it before anyway.
Do we need a motion to sign, or someone else signing? I guess Chief's not...
For the State of New Hampshire Parade Permit, we've, we want a Selectman and Town Manager, Chief Police, just...
Yep, we want to. We're here, I was just doing a motion to sign.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Chair of the Board of Selectmen to sign on behalf of the Town of Loudon for the State of New Hampshire Application for Parade Permit, and that's by the state.
I will second that.
Motion made by Selectman Miller, seconded by Selectman Griffin to move forward and sign the application for parade permit for the State of New Hampshire, have the Chair sign it. Discussion?
No.
Take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Misses, guys? That's only at two, right? Yep, I'll add the Board of Permits at 6:45.
Chief, will you reach out with them on that leg information?
Yeah.
See if they can update that.
Yep. All right, Department of Health, Deats. Brenda, do you have anything?
No, just a quick note for you guys that the, I've been notified that the audit is going to be done here in town on August 13th through the 15th.
What's the dates?
August 13th through the 15th, in the office.
Can I bring up an audit thing? Audit comment? I was going to say for new business, but essentially, you just mentioned audits. Should go with that. Town Clerks, audit.
Yeah, that's my next note.
100% pass. No issues. All the money, all the tags, everything. That's a lot of work. That's a lot. And normally, it doesn't happen every year, I guess, and I guess there's, in the past, they've done it, they've had, it has never been back-to-back, I believe, but there's been a separation between, but if you're missing a small decal sticker, you don't pass 100%. And how many of those hand out? They hand out a year. How many people in town? Times two. And plus, the cash all came through, and all, it just all worked together. So they did, two of them down there do a fantastic job, and they just, it was, they're very proud and they're very happy. It was 100%, you know, the audit was 100% pass, and I tend to believe that that's...
Commend them.
Awesome.
It's a lot, it's a lot going on in that office. It's not just registrations.
Nope, they have a full plate, and they've done a great job, and I'm proud of them, and I appreciate everything they do, so just want to bring that up. Any else?
Nope.
Did you have something to add to that? Did I steal your thunder?
You did. I had an idea, Town Clerk, chaotic, maybe today, perfect, no issues, but that's okay.
Sorry about that.
As long as it was mentioned.
All right, Russ Bro.
Yes. The bridge on Ricker Road was started early Monday morning, and things are going very well. Sounds like they're going to be pouring the footings. It's all dug out and prepped for the footings. They're going to pour them tomorrow, and then they'll strip and put the riprap in and get set up, possibly next Wednesday, to put the bridge deck on, so it's moving along well. So I'm glad of that. Over here at the rec field, the light poles and the lights are all installed and up and running. So over there with the crew, we're doing some cleanup around the tennis court, basketball court. Today, we dug the grass out on the edge of the tennis court to, we've installed some stones so we can store the soccer nets and the bleachers and stuff on that side where normally the grass grows up in it, and it's, it'll look a lot better, and it should, you know, it should work better for us. One problem I have is the lawnmower, one of the smaller lawnmowers we have, the Skag, it is down. It's got some hydrostatic drive issues, and the mower's 10, 12 years old, so I'm half thinking that maybe we should be looking for another one because we use them pretty steady every week between May to, say, September anyways, so. And just to do it with one mower, we have that large mower, which was bought for the fields, and it doesn't work so well around the building, so I'll probably have somebody take a look at the mower and to see what, you know, get a cost estimate on it, but I think we should be looking into purchasing a new one, and I don't know if maybe we could take the money out of the highway equipment line or something to pay for it.
Is that the zero term?
Yeah, yeah.
What's up, like, I go for?
It's probably going to be 10, 12, 13,000. I haven't looked. We looked maybe last year or the year before, and there were, I mean, a really good one was 18, and a cheap one was like 6, so we have to decide what, where we want to be for longevity of the mower. It gets quite a bit of abuse, and we maintain it every, either spring or... It gets quite a bit of abuse and we maintain it every, either spring or fall. We go through it and do what we can. Just had a small leak on the hydrostat. I think it was all through last year and this year it was leaking a little bit. But the other day, they used it while I was gone. They said it's done. It won't even move anymore. So I just don't know how much money we wanna tie up into older mower versus looking at a new one. Curious what you guys thought.
Possibly getting a year out of it.
What's that?
As in possibly getting only a year out of it.
Yeah, and it's like everything. It's like a plow truck. You only need it when it snows, but they need to go. And so I don't really have any other backup mowers at the time, but at this time, I mean. So I guess I will do some looking and updating. Hopefully, it slows down a little bit on the growing because it's so hot out.
I was gonna say, what's your potential usage over the next few weeks?
Next few weeks? It's probably the slowest time of the summer, then when it cools down a little bit. But we do have Old Home Day coming, so we have some things that we need to prep for, so.
Okay. I'm just thinking, because this board doesn't meet for another two weeks after the, after today.
Right. I don't know.
You have to just keep somebody in touch?
I guess. I mean, I'll try to work something out. See if we, I mean, if we could borrow a mower or something maybe for one week. And then I'll have some members away next week. Or next meeting.
Just go to each dealer and say, "I just need to test it." Test it for a day.
Yeah, yeah. Demo.
Just keep on doing that. Eventually, you get five days out of it.
That'll get me through to a fall. Maybe we'll have a good one dropped off at the dump, who knows? No, other than that, we're just doing our routine ditching and keeping everybody busy.
Cool. Good.
The guy for the screen, I thought he was gonna screen last week, but he didn't. I kinda recommended it. He didn't when I wasn't here because of the crushing. I just wanted to see what product he was gonna put. So I'm assuming he'll pick up next week. But I'll have to communicate a little bit harder with him and then make sure that's gonna happen. Other than that, I'm good.
Questions?
I'm good.
Okay. Chief Blanchett?
Good evening. We did receive a fireworks permit for Old Home Days. It does appear to be complete. So when Chief Flanders gets back from vacation, I'll get with him. We'll get that signed and turned in so they can get Fire Marshal's approval next on that. Last meeting, I mentioned to the board that we're supposed to go participate with Homeland Security on a drill for Seabrook Station on the 24th or 25th of September. Has there been any discussion if a member of the board would like to participate or not?
I don't think any of us discussed it, right? We, just in that meeting.
So.
Does anybody have an interest in one of that?
Is that September, you said?
Yeah, it's September 24th or 25th. We can go either day. But they would like to see two members of our community go. One from Emergency Management and one from Leadership.
Where is it again?
It's gonna be at the State National Guard Training Complex in Pembroke.
I could probably get back to you by the end of the week.
All right. And if, if a member can't, Chief Flanders did say he could participate if, if there's not a member of the board that can.
Well, what's best? Is it best he goes?
Um.
Like?
I always think it's good to get the decision makers to go to some of these things to see if can have some background understanding of what might be expected of us as a community.
Can he have more than that?
It specifically says two. I could ask him.
I'm just thinking, it'd be good for him to go with it. And if he can have three, then you two and a selectman.
Yep. I'll respond back and ask him the question.
If you can't go, I can go. I'll make plans for it.
Other than that, ambulance two's got some air conditioning issues. We're trying to Band-Aid it, for the lack of better terms. With this heat, that's a problem. But that truck's given us trouble for a few years now with air conditioning. And the way they build it, the rubber hoses that goes up through the aluminum extrusions, they're spray foamed into the body. And the rubber hoses, they're just dry right to the point. The recharge points for the air conditioner are also corroded so bad, you can't really change them out without affecting the hoses, which, you know, trails down the line. So we're literally trying to Band-Aid a repair to it to get through this heat. But...
Which one did we just put money into for air conditioning?
Uh, that one.
That one?
It's, it's...
I thought they were doing a replacement of most of what needed to be done.
We replaced what we could.
Okay.
You know, it's a 2014 truck with over 180,000 miles on it. It's the one that we should have replaced a few years ago. We're still waiting for the new one to come in and do that. So it's costing us, it's costing us money.
Any information on that?
Uh, I did report, I think, to the board last week. I think it is supposed to be completed, I think, the 16th of September currently.
Which year?
I'm hoping this year. Which means we probably won't see it or have it in service until mid to late October is what I'm planning on. If we get it then. So we did have to put new tires on it last week, which was a $2,000 expense, which I hated to do, but for safety reasons, we had to do it. We may have to put some significant money into it to get this air conditioning problem fixed if, I can't find an alternative route. The tower had a turbo problem yesterday. Luckily firefighter Tucker, who's a very experienced diesel mechanic, was on duty. And we were able to get the parts from ATG and get that put back together yesterday. And get that fixed. We had some charging issues with ambulance one last week. And had to replace the batteries and the charging units in that. And other than that, everything's running good. Personnel are doing well on their, the career staff is doing well on their probationary training. We have three that have reviews coming up over the course of the next couple of weeks. You'll be seeing that in your packet here by the end of the month. We did a training meeting last night. We had 21 members attend where we trained with elevated master stream devices, hauled some water, had people on pumps, trying to get in their sign-offs, all of that type of stuff. So making some good headway with the probationary members to get them up to speed. Last weekend firefighter Leonard and Brady Leonard and firefighter Hayden Gardner got their S-130 Wildland Fire Certifications completed over at Bear Brook on Saturday. So that was good. And our live-in student has been picked and she'll be moving in with us on the 18th of August to start her term with us here in Loudon. And she'll be partaking in the EMS portion of her training at Lakes Region Community College to start off. So that'll be good because she'll be eligible to test around Christmas time and be able to start filming some shifts also while she's here. So that's all I have to report tonight. I'll entertain any questions the board has.
Questions?
I'm all set.
Might not be your wheelhouse, but I got the two of you. We maintain the fields out here.
Best of 10, yeah.
Stuff like that, okay. What about the building?
Which building?
The rec building right out here. Is that on us? Is that on somebody else?
Well, we maintained the dugouts when they got to the point where nobody else was. So we took it over and did it. I mean, so that's, when it's, when it's that bad, then we step in and take it over.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fire Fighters Association rebuilt the snack shack probably eight years ago now, seven years ago now. Because that was in pretty bad shape. So we ended up fixing some of the framing and putting all new T-111 on it.
Okay.
Painting it and all that.
I mean, the door jams are rotted. So it looks like, I talked to Rodney once about, maybe down in the future, replacing the doors.
Okay. I wasn't sure if the responsibility was ours or not.
It appears, it appears it's gonna be.
What's that?
It appears it is.
Well, so you made a comment. You said, if, if, what'd you say? If it gets to that level, you'll do it, or I forget what you just said.
Yeah, if it gets...
So who's supposed to do it?
Well, I, I was always under the impression that, like, especially the dugouts and things like that were LIAA. I don't know. But I don't know. So it got to the point where...
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I mean, it was just better to invest the money into it and do it. So that's what we did. So, I mean, I feel like...
Shack, I took a walk around last night after I was in here for all the paperwork and everything. And that thing's a little on the, could use some attention side. As far as, you know, around the vents, looks like black wood. One of the front pieces has fallen off, just trim, paint, stuff like that. I was just wondering with Old Home Days, not that we have a ton of time, but if there was maybe something we could try to figure out. And then if, if it meant a volunteer on a weekend or something, I'll be here on a Sunday to help. You know? Something just, it, it doesn't look great now with Old Home Days two weeks away. Might be worth looking into.
If we...
And I wasn't sure, I wasn't trying to set anybody up with asking any questions.
Yeah, no, that's fine. It's just a...
I kinda remember from being out there before that we had done something with the dugout.
Right.
Not really understanding whether that was ours or not to begin with. I don't know if we ever came to a conclusion, so.
Right. The wind blew the dugout over, so we flipped that over. And then I started looking at it. That's when I come up with the idea to work on.
Give it the TLC that needed.
Yeah.
I would think if the town owns the land, the town owns the buildings. And the town maintains the land, town maintains the buildings. That's what I would think. I don't know where that money comes from, but what line out of it.
Oh, we have a line.
If you have staff to do it. I'm just saying though, I wouldn't leave that up to any 501(c)(3).
I can hire it if he has time, you know? And have assistants, people help him. It seems to get done that way. It just takes time, so.
But we've got a rec line.
Yeah, what do we have to money on that? Normally, not right now, but like, what is it? What's the dollar figures?
I spent a pretty good chunk on the bases for the, the lights. I brought my machine in and did the light conduit trenching and stuff just to keep the other machine going because we just don't have enough people. We just don't to keep all that we need to do, so. And that's taken a little longer, but it's coming together now. But...
So what, what do we need to do to that building? If pieces of wood are rotting out, what do they mean?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, at least, at least some kind of stripping along that front because there's a good portion of it that was, looked rotted. Around the vent looked horrible. You know, the roof vents up at the top didn't look, look too bad. I mean, I'm not saying we, you know, spend five grand and, you know, throw a couple acres of wood at it or something. But there is a couple of spots that really could use maybe some attention. Or maybe I need another set of eyes. Tell me if I'm wrong.
No, I'm sure that the building's old enough it could use a coat of paint. But before you can do the coat of paint, you gotta...
You want a good piece of wood to be painted, right?
Anything that's rotted, like the trim or the door jams and things like that.
Yeah.
We put a few thousand into it, like I said, and painted it a few years back. We stripped the siding off of it and just put all new T-111. And we had to fix some of the framing at that time. Like I said, it's been, it was before I was chief. So it's, it's at least seven or eight years ago that we did it. The association paid the bill for that one just to help it out because it was in pretty rough shape then.
I mean, I don't know how this process works and I'm not looking to spend any of these money and bury you with more stuff to do. I know you're, everybody's busy, but...
Well, I mean, I can check tonight or tomorrow and let you know what we have for available labor.
Just to me, it's just, if those are town property, town maintained, I think we just keep it in-house and somehow make it work.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Again, I'm not saying these things...
I mean, we have a sprayer, so maybe we can put, throw some paint on it and...
And probably the other one on the other field probably needs just as much, right? So, but, and again, that's down that road and...
Well, it's just July, so we just started a new budget. So I'm sure we have some funds. I'll take a walk out there and see what kind of trim it needs or whatever. Kinda get a pricing for it and see how much we need to. If it's a, you know, sheet of T-111, you know, for 30 bucks, I'm sure we can get that and replace whatever needs to be done.
We've got some people that would probably help out.
If there's a time to volunteer, I'll be here, so.
Yeah, I'll just say. What do we need? It goes out weekend.
Okay. On that, I'm all set.
All right. You gotta stick around, right? Minnesota bids?
Yeah.
You wanna take off? You can take off.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, let me read Dana's thing. You still take off, this is Dana's.
Unless you went here.
Unless you went here, right? It does have your name in here. No.
So Dana's unable to be here, so he provided a letter or, yeah, a letter. Says, "Good evening. Sorry I couldn't be in attendance tonight. Please have continued the busy summer season. This past week, we've been gathering traffic data on upper end of a school street in the zone we've been getting complaints about. We continue to remain vigilant on all roads in town. Last week, we had a round of oral board interviews. As a result, now we have three candidates moving to the background phase of the employment process. Hopefully, at least a couple of these will work out. All equipment is functional at the moment with regular repairs and maintenance occurring. The officers have been trained on how, trained on and now are wearing the body cameras as part of our daily encounters. We are very excited about the National Night Out on August 5th. Again, I would like to thank New Hampshire Motor Speedway, Jasmar Properties, SR1 Equipment and JM Car Landscape and for their generous donations to make this possible. I also want to thank all the agencies coming together to assist Loudon Police to make this work." Excuse me. "We will be unveiling our mascot at this event and asking for our Loudon residents to help us with a name. We'll have a spot at the Police Association table to put entries in for the name. Only appropriate names will be considered. At the Loudon Police Association table, we'll be selling tickets for food vendors. The tickets will be a dollar each and will coincide with the value of each vendor, at each vendor. For example, an ice cream cone will cost one ticket. So we can encourage everyone to, in town, to join us for National Night Out at the recreation field so you can not only get to know and see our officers, but see what other resources may be available. Unfortunately, I won't be taking any questions tonight, but I hope everyone, everyone's having a fantastic week." Chief Dana Flanders.
No questions.
We'll text him later.
Yeah. All right. New business. Memo from Chief Blanchett, reference Minnesota bid items.
Menure.
In here?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. There were quite a few of these.
We got lots of stuff.
Good money for that stuff, too.
We got, yeah, we got silly money for some of that stuff.
So how do you recommend we do these? I think there's...
I'd like to do them all and just do one motion and read them all, what they are. And second, I can do that way. Is there a form? That's what I would do. I don't know. You don't want motion second on every one of them, do you?
Not really.
I can do any one we do it.
Every one.
I would say one motion.
Under God.
List the items.
List the ball.
All right. I will make a motion that we accept the following bids as received. The first is for a Federal II bulb, red and clear rotating beacon. High bid of $246, winning bidder Patrick Bound. Is that how you pronounce that, Chief?
Yeah.
Second is another Federal II bulb, red and clear rotating beacon for $245, Patrick Bound. Next is a bulb Federal rotating beacon, winning bid of $170 to Anthony Mellow. Next, old school floating strainer, high bid of $31, Kyle Smith. Next, old school floating strainer, high bid of $31, Kyle Smith. Next, red Federal beacon, high bid of $180, Patrick Bound. Next, low profile strainer, high bid of $25, Kyle Smith. Next, floating strainer, high bid of $25, Kyle Smith. And aluminum strainer, high bid of $25, to Kyle Smith."
I will second all of that.
Can you read those again?
Sure.
Here.
Motion made by Selectman Miller, seconded by Selectman Griffin to accept the bids in totality, huh?
As all.
As stated. Any discussion?
None.
No, just, I would just say that, you know, that's a whole lot of equipment. It's been sitting around for an awfully long time, and the fire chief has taken the time to post it, and we're giving at least something for it instead of throwing it in the trash or the metal heap or however that wants to go.
Yep. Agreed. Okay. Take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I kicked Russell loose and I have a question about the next item. Damn it. The next one's the commercial hauler permit. This is for shaver disposal. Yearly permit. Has his insurance covered here.
He was on that, right?
I have. Took four vehicles, right? Yeah, took us four.
Yes, again, it's an annual event that occurs. And we did get the information that you sent us on that. He does a lot of pickups around town, a lot of residential stuff as well, so...
I saw the list.
Right. "I will make a motion that we approve the light commercial hauler application permit and further authorize the chair of the board of selectmen to sign on behalf of the town."
I will second.
Motion made by Selectman Miller, seconded by Selectman Griffin to approve the hauler permit and for the chairperson to sign off on the document. Discussion?
None.
None.
Okay. Take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Town of Loudon, New Hampshire, 2025, 2026, annual assessing services. Anybody have any comments, discussion? Where was that figure? This is Christine Murdo doing the same thing?
Correct.
Correct.
She's been doing it for the town since 2012.
Yeah, that's her thought, yeah.
Feast remained pretty, has been pretty steady throughout those years, except for reval years from next year, quite a bit more.
When she does double the work.
Yep, exactly.
I just curious, like, is...
And DRA reviews that before it's submitted to you guys.
Gotcha.
And they make sure that it's done properly.
And just curious, so she's been doing it since 2012, so we never reach out to somebody else to do it, or?
We used to, and then it was decided that unless there was an issue, we would, because our rate stays pretty much the same, we, we have not.
Gotcha. And she's familiar with everybody's property, pretty much, so...
Very.
Yes.
She's very familiar with a lot of the people.
She worked for the company even before 2012, she worked for the company that we had hired, and then they dismantled, and she went out on her own and continued working with the town.
Gotcha.
Uh, so I'll make a motion that we accept the 25, 26 annual assessing services contract with Christina Murdo. Contract sum of $42,960 for the year. And then section two is $75 hourly and $20 per parcel if she has to go out and do the additional lots. And again, that's for July 1st, 2025, to June 30th of 2026.
I will second that.
Motion made by Selectman Miller, seconded by Selectman Griffin to accept the Christine Murdo and moving forward being our annual assessor for the Town of Loudon with the dates of, um, July 1st, 2025 through, up to June 30th, 2026, in the amount of $4,000, $42,960. Discussion?
Uh, I would also just add that she has been here since 2012. Uh, she's done an exceptional job. She has a whole lot of information, she shares a lot of information with the board of selectmen when needed. Uh, she represents us whenever there's a case that needs to go to court. Um, she spends her time over there as well, so, uh, she's done extremely well for the town, uh, as far as her, um, information that she shares for abatements and, um, which sometimes takes a lot of time, because she has to put a lot of information together to send that abatement to the board of selectmen for our final decision whether or not we accept or deny. So I would say that she does an awesome job, um, and has for a very long time.
Good. Okay, take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We can all sign this, there's plenty of room for all of us. This has authorized municipal assessing officials.
Mm-hmm, that'd be us.
Chief, you can go if you want to go.
Have a good night.
See ya. Good night, Chief. I'll try to catch up with you, I know I said that last week, but...
I'll be here all week and all weekend.
I might be as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Old business, anybody have any old business?
No, I'm not taking this call, I'll stop ahead.
I wasn't sure if I was gonna bring that up here or that, so it's already been brought up for the LIAA in the building.
Yeah.
So, on that, I think I am, I'll stand pat.
Now, the only two things I have is the pay scale format is almost done, strictly just a format, so that should be coming out the next few days, probably get emailed to everybody. So just look at the format, see if you like the format. If there's numbers, don't, the numbers aren't gonna... You already have?
A rough one, needs a lot of, um, finesse and redoing.
Take a look, see where we're at, and then if there's groups of, if there's groups in there that you think, like, if you don't think the highway assistant road agent should be with the PD sergeant, then make a note of it. Just, it's gonna take a little bit to move people.
Oh, yeah. Where they gotta be. Yeah.
Yep.
And there was, there's, I'll add, there's also a couple of samples from other towns that we found that, you know, helped us format logans.
So take a look, yep, we're on the right scale of that.
Thank you, Brandon.
You're welcome.
Now, Lindsey, Lindsey, yeah.
Lindsey did a lot of work with that, yes.
We did a lot of work with that.
Yeah.
And then now we're working on a final list for the tenure of employees, the appreciation for the long-term, ten-year employees.
Yeah.
That's coming up, so at some point, when that comes out, we're gonna have to decide as a board if you wanna do what you wanna do for the five-year, the ten-year, the fifteen-year, twenty-year, and I think five, five-year increments works.
Mm-hmm.
And then that, you know, whatever, however you wanna play that out as far as, um, appreciation to those employees who have been here. Five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years, so...
Yep. Some over thirty-five.
Yep. Yeah. Um, important dates, um, July 16th, Ice Cream and Wagon Ride, 6:00 PM, Rec Field. July 17th, CIP meeting, 8:00 AM. Boy, it's over impossible, that's kicking on for you. July 17th, Planning Board meeting, 7:00 PM. July 23rd, Freeze Brothers Big Band, 6:30 PM at the Rec Field. July 24th, Zoning Board meeting, 7:00 PM. July 30th, Wildlife Encounters, 6:00 PM, Rec Field. August 5th, National Night Out, 5 to 8, Rec Field. August 13th, Mr. Aaron Band, Aaron Band, 6:00 PM, Rec Field. August 20th, Pickleball Tournament, 6:00 PM, Rec Field. Pickleball tournament. I am, I run that. All right, we're gonna open up public comment. Hey, public comments.
Collette Conway, 161 Bear Hill Road.
Hi.
I just grabbed him on the way out because, um, one of my questions was in regards to the snack shack. LIAA did do most of the maintenance, but it was volunteers, the coaches, the LIAA board, um, anyone in the town could come, and most of the stuff was donated or fundraised by LIAA. So I get that the town's looking to try to figure out how to fix that stuff, but it can be done if we have an LIAA board that's recruiting volunteers and getting materials donated. I was just asking, who has the key? Because, um, the police department used to have a key, sorry, I can't see you. Um, the police department used to have a key, they no longer to my knowledge, so I was told the only ones that have it would be the LIAA director and our chief of fire. He just confirmed they do not have a key. There is mold coming out of the vent. It could be, we can't get in, so it could be as bad as hazmat, or it could be as easy as a spray bottle of bleach. But we don't know, and they're gonna be doing food in it for our old home day. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, who's got the keys to that and how do we make sure that's safe for human consumption?
I think we're on the right track. I don't, I, I understand the whole LIAA thing, and who's the responsibility it should be, or who has done in the past.
Right.
But I think we have a burden to make sure that it's safe, it looks good.
Correct.
And it's gonna represent us in the field and no long day, and people in there cooking aren't getting sick, so...
Yeah.
I think we're on the right track of just us taking care of that. And I think moving forward, I am all for just us taking care of things.
Yeah. And it could fall under the rec committee. I mean, we have a recreational person, so, I mean, it easily can fall under that.
Yep.
Um, okay. Sorry, all right, now I'll get to my question. Um, any updates, and I'll direct this to you, Gilman, only because you mentioned at the last meeting that you had reached out. Have you had any, um, contact or information, receipts, anything that we talked about at the last town meeting in regards to communication with the LIAA, or them appearing for any meetings or holding a meeting?
Yeah, my understanding is they're not willing to attend a meeting, correct?
Correct. Okay. So, uh, I'll get to my point of this, but I'm on the IRS website right now. And with that being said, LIAA is registered as auto revocation lists, meaning they are not filing their taxes, they are not within compliance, so it has been revoked. That was in 2014. So type in the slight version change of their name when she re-registered in 2020, because she hadn't been registering and lost the name to somebody else. They do not appear on the IRS list, which means they are not registering. Still filing any type of tax return or anything with a 501(c)...
Seven.
Seven. You still have to file something stating that you don't qualify to file some. So there's no, no records whatsoever. The, um, registration of that title on the state website right now is going to expire as of this year. It will need to be re-registered. So why am I bringing this all up? We give them $5,000 a year, I know we talked about this before, um, and I know you guys are walking a fine line as to where you get involved and where you don't, and that it's being donated to association or, uh, independent type association, but we donate $15,000 to, um, the Loudon Ledger, who is audited by the Town of Loudon or monitored, and we're giving them 5,000 with no monitoring. Uh, I don't necessarily feel like we have to, but we have to have a board or a meeting, or we need to actually pull this, uh, program under the recreational division here in town, or at least have the recreational, uh, person, a voting member on the board. Um, I have reached out today to follow up with two more members that were listed on the state registration site, um, and they have been trying to get in touch with her. They're on the board and no results in weeks. So I don't know what we do, but we are giving her taxpayer dollars, and there are no public meetings, we can't get her to respond, we can't get her to a selectman's meeting, we can't get her to an LIAA meeting, we're giving her taxpayer dollars. I can't say that enough. This is a phenomenal program. It really hits home, because I used to run it. They have great programs. I'd love to volunteer again, I'd love to help, I don't wanna run the program, but I'll do what I have to do to get good people on the board, but there's just no physical way to get anything done, and we're still handing money. You know, I, I just, I'm kind of at a loss at this point, because, I don't know, aside from going to the AG's office, which I can certainly do, um, I don't know what else we can do as a town to get this running. The middle school has, um, an A-team and a B-team in soccer, which is coming up this fall. They are eliminating the B-team. That pulls so many more kids back into the recreational program. If we do not have a program for them that runs successfully, um, these kids aren't playing soccer, they will not ever make a middle school team, or maybe even the high school team down the road, if they don't make the A-team. They have to keep playing in order to have the ability to play at a high school level. That's why this program is so super important, especially knowing that they're going to be pulling much more kids back into our recreational program. So, I don't know if you guys have anything in regards to suggestions, comments, I, I'm just, some support, I don't know what else to do.
Well, we are the fiscal agents. So I think financially, um, I mean, she can certainly come here and go into non-public if she wishes.
Doesn't wanna come here.
Then let's contact the attorney and see what other obligations we owe. I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's just foolish, it is completely foolish, you know, again, we're in charge of the money.
Yep.
So, to give that money out when we're not able to, as you said, monitor or even have her come to a board. Stop funding, but it's not fair to the kids.
No.
So we're not gonna catch...
And that's a hard spot.
Situation, but I think it can be resolved with a little bit of guidance.
Yep.
My, that's my thought. A little bit of guidance from people who are well in the know on what our obligations are and what our responsibilities are as far as what we can do and take for actions. I think, uh, we owe that, owe that to the kids and everybody else that would otherwise be participating, but we, we should be able to get information like that at any time from any committee or anybody that's asking for taxpayer money.
So the board's good with going on the attorney?
Absolutely.
I, I'm not super involved in the baseball, especially since my kids have aged out. But, you know, I've heard from some coaches, and they had to go buy their own equipment because it was rat-infested, you know, it was disgusting. Chief Blanchett just told me that he went in to fix something in the shack up on Staniels Road, and he was like, "It was disgusting, like gross." These are huge moneymakers, these snack shacks. I never not had them open. They make huge money, but you have to have volunteers, and if you're not taking volunteers on LIAA, you're not gonna take any public volunteers for, to run the snack shack. It, it takes an army to run this program. It really does. So I just feel like we just, we have to do something.
I just gotta correct one thing, and maybe I'm, I'm not accurate in this, but you had just commented about the Loudon Ledger and how we donate $15,000 at Loudon Ledger.
Yeah.
And we don't get anything in return, you said, did you say that?
No, uh, they were pulled under the umbrella for auditing, is it auditing or something? They, they were pulled in for monitoring, like, like an audit or something, just checks and balances to, to make sure the funds are being spent appropriately.
The old home day committee do the same thing.
Correct.
The yearly, uh, annual audit, they have to have done and turned into us for cost.
So you, you were using them as a reference?
I was just a reference.
Okay.
Yeah, no, nothing wrong with that. Just solely a reference.
Pretty much, that's our website screw, that's, I think, we may not be getting our money's worth, but I don't think we're losing it.
No, no, no. No, it was solely a reference because, you know, if we're giving money to other organizations and we are holding them accountable, why are we not holding this accountable? I mean, this is for our kids, and I get, you know, your perspective that, you know, it reflects on the town. I'm just thinking that, you know, soccer fees I heard were, um, or maybe it was softball, were like forty-five one year, now they're going up to fifty-five or so, that's outrageous. You know, I've, you know, there's, there's businesses that sponsor, they're now thinking about pulling back because they hear their money isn't going to sponsors. It's, there's just a lot that's gonna tie into our reputation as a town at this point, so...
No, we definitely look into it.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Amy Griffin, 701-93 Shaker Road. I just have a quick question, going to the school board...
board's first finance policy meeting tomorrow. When's the last time has the school district involved the town with the budgeting? Do you have any idea?
I think that question was posed a while ago and it was probably over two years ago. Actually, I think the last time I went was over three years ago.
Okay.
And that was with another select person when we were invited, so it's probably been over three.
I couldn't remember and I just wanted to have my facts right. Yes, Tunnel Liberty had pushed for this meeting starting in April and they finally have it scheduled for tomorrow.
Good.
Yeah.
And when, and when is it?
Tomorrow at 5:30 at the SAU office. Then they have their policy meeting after.
Gotcha.
So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any else? Good? Okay. Um, is, um, we're going non-public?
Yes.
Yeah, it's about, you know what it's about?
I have no idea.
It's about tax, not free. Proper tax.
Well, that's easy enough. You're gonna give her a jingle and, okay. All right, with that being said, I'll make a motion that we go into non-public session under 91A colon 3, Roman numeral 2C, matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board. Unless that person requests an open meeting, this exemption shall extend to include any application for assistance or tax abatements or waiver of a fee, fine, or other levies if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant.
I will second that.
Motion made by Selectman Miller, seconded by Selectman Griffin to go into non-public session under 91A3 colon 2C. Discussion? Roll call vote. Selectman Griffin?
Yes.
Selectman Miller?
Yes.
Gilman, yes. We are now in non-public.